We're gonna call the meeting to order Thursday, March ninth, Board of Trustees meeting. If we could start, please with roll call.
Chair Wilson.
Here.
Trustee Benavida.
Here.
Trustee Floyd.
Here.
Trustee Wa. Trustee Haran.
Here.
Trustee Melindres.
Here.
Trustee Ortiz.
Here.
Trustee Ramaker. Trustee Rogers.
Here.
Trustee Whiteley.
Here.
And we have a quorum chair.
Thank you. If everyone, please stand for Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And item two on the agenda is public comment. Topics raised under this item must be limited to matters on today's agenda. Anyone wishing to speak during this item must sign up on the roster provided prior to the public comment period. The signup must include the commenter's name, legal address, and the agenda item that is being commented on. Commenters should state if they want their remarks included in the minutes of the meeting. If there is no agenda item listed, the person will be called on at the end of the meeting. Remarks by speakers during the public comment period shall be limited to three minutes each. A speaker may not transfer time to another speaker, although the chair has the authority to grant additional time to a speaker. Anyone wishing to comment via email under this item must send an email to boardcomments@lvccld.org. The email must include the commenter's name, legal address, and the agenda item that is being commented on. Email comments are limited to five hundred words in length and must also identify whether the commenter wants their remarks to be included in the minutes of the meeting. Any comments which do not state the commenter's name, legal address, or exceed five hundred words in length shall not be considered. Any comments which do not identify an agenda item will be read at the end of the meeting. The public comment period at the Library District Board meetings shall be limited to a maximum of forty-five minutes for both periods of public comment. Remarks by speakers during the public comment period should be limited to three minutes each. A speaker may not transfer time to another speaker, although the chair has authority to grant additional time to a speaker. When more than fifteen people wish to comment, the chair shall proportionately reduce the time allotted to forty-five minutes. Do we have anyone signed up for public comment on agendized items?
No, not at this time.
Thank you. And item three, has everyone had a chance to review tonight's agenda?
Yes.
Motion for the agenda?
So move.
Second Felipe Ortiz.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Agenda. Agenda has been adopted. Approval of board minutes. We have the minutes from the regular board meeting February ninth last month. Does anybody have any corrections, changes, clarifications for the board minutes from last month? Hearing none, I'll cut the motion to approve.
So moved Jose.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Minutes are approved. Chairs report, item five on the agenda. Trustee Turner Whiteley, we, last, last month, we created a working group. They've already made to work with the foundation on a new working relationship between us. They've already made significant progress. Trustee Turner Whiteley will give us a real brief update. And for the trustees here, I forwarded that proposal that she'll mention to you in your email earlier today, and it'll be attached to the board packet, the backup documents here shortly. Trustee Whiteley, did you want to just give us a real quick briefing on what you have gotten done so far on the work group since trustee Wa is absent today?
Sure, Chair, thank you. We, together with the foundation, have identified a consultant who's gonna do a deep dive with us and take a look at that's invested practices in the industry and put us on a path to to creating what we think is going to be something really special. So we're working on that and hoping to expedite the process and getting settled as soon as we can.
Thank you very much, trustee Whiteley. So it's nice to hear how quickly that is moving along. From my understanding, the foundation's been extremely cooperative in helping us move along together on this very fast, and we're very instrumental in helping making it possible to get a consultant picked out so quickly. And Director Watson was a big help in that too. So thank you for everybody who's putting the work on getting this done. Next, item six, library reports, and I will turn it over to Director Watson.
Good evening, Chair Wilson. For the trustee members, I submitted my report as written, but I did want to point out a couple of items that that I participated in near the end of the month where I had the opportunity to be a participant in the CCSD principal for a day. I volunteered to do that at Liberty High School, toured the school, met the staffs. I had the opportunity to also speak with an Air Force JRTC class, spend some time with the principal, and learned a lot more about our schools, but also was able to share information about the library district and the work that we do jointly in supporting the community. Also, at the invitation of trustee Harong, I participated in Nevada Reading Week at Divich Elementary to read books to several classes, had the opportunity to read to two second grade classes, one fourth grade class, and one kindergarten class, and this is the second year that I've done that and looking forward to doing it again in the future. Now I'll take any questions from the trustees regarding my director's report.
Do any trustees have any questions for Director Watson at this time?
Can I jump here?
Trustees, you're on?
Yes, I don't have any questions. I just want to thank you, Executive Director Watson, for coming and reading to our children at Divich. They absolutely loved it. We also had several other team members. We had Matt McNally, Nina Guevara, Melissa Ramos, and Shanna Harrington, who all did an amazing job, and it was just, it was, it made it extra special for everyone at school. So we appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Thank you, trustee. I believe Mr. Vino had a report to bring to us as well, or?
Am I correct on that, Director Watson?
Yes.
John Vino, General Services Director.
Floresto Cabias, CFO.
It's not so much as a report, as we understand, there were some questions, timeline questions, and maybe procedural questions around how a project the size of West Las Vegas is, gets moved forward. When we go to the board, I'm not sure I answered all the questions, because I'm not really sure what the board was looking for. So happy to answer specific questions if I missed the point that we were trying to get to. You know, I'll just start by, by no, pointing out that, you know, typically, what we were asked to research was a couple of things. Was the budget required to be approved by other, other state entities outside of the way we're gonna approach it? Floresto can talk a little bit about that when we get to new market tax credits. And are we following past practices in terms of what we bring to the board and when we bring to the board? So I went back and I did look. Typically, you know, a project budget is established with the architect, and here it was established at six thirty-eight, and that's just a working budget. Obviously, we haven't put at that time anything on paper. And then we look at that budget again when we get to the schematic design, when drawings are at thirty percent. We come back to the board and ask for approval again with the budget and, and all the documents that are associated with it at sixty percent. And then, of course, the real final budget obviously doesn't take place until we can establish that after the bidding, and that's when we bring to the board and we actually approve the contract. We come to the board with the actual construction contract and everything that's associated with it. So at the January board meeting, the board approved the schematic design phase for West Las Vegas. We brought it forward. I had the architects here. It included an extensive package that was presented to the board. It had design considerations. It had drawings, renderings. It included schedules, the project budget, narratives on landscaping, acoustics and artwork. It had narratives on how we were gonna pursue LED sustainable design as well as interior design visioning presentations. So we've really obviously just moved into design development with, with KME. This is really an extensive process. We go through multiple, multiple estimates. Each estimate can have seven hundred or more line items. Each of those line items, you know, we have to verify quantities, the unit cost, we go into the square footage, is it fair, right? Linear footages, and then the total dollars, you know, the difference in a single line item just on the takeoffs can be a hundred to two hundred thousand dollars. So just to give you an idea, I mean, in past practices, we brought to the board for East Vegas schematic design in October of two thousand sixteen. We didn't bring design development to the board to the following March, so five or six months, and we're just really just getting started here. I still plan on bringing design where I feel, as we have been with this project ahead of schedule, I hope to bring design development with where we are with the budget at that time, April, May. And I think as we get to the bottom of design development in that April, May timeframe is when we typically will be starting the new mark, the new market tax credit. So I'll let Floresto talk a little bit about his timeline here and how he's proceeding with the new.
Typically, the board approves the annual budget, which includes appropriations for construction projects. So that'll be good timing with Director Vino's budget report in April and May. We're gonna be presenting the tentative budget in April that outline the estimated expenditures that Director Vino is expecting for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-four budget. And as far as we're aware, that's the formal approval of any construction costs, for example, in the West Las Vegas project that the board directly approves. That's done annually in the budget. And that's a progressive spending program that we followed over the years, going back to the Centennial Hills Library to construction of the East Las Vegas Library, which is what we call a pay-as-you-go approach. So we're accumulating funds over that construction time period, and we ensure that we have a reserve in place to fund at least each year's worth of expenditures for constructions. And Director Vino is estimating about an eighteen-month build-out program. And so where we look right now from a budget standpoint is that we have those funds or will have those funds by the time the construction schedule moves forward and through completion. We talked about the new markets tax credit program. We're bringing in our consultants for new markets to inform the board about the specifics of it, give everyone an overall view of how the structure works, and those are, that's another example of funds we expect to get going forward. It's not funds we have in the bank now, but that could be anywhere from three, four to five million dollars that would go towards construction of the West Las Vegas Library. Not to mention possible fundraising that could happen between now and during construction. So we don't have all the funds technically in hand, but we have enough of a reserve to continue moving forward, and we expect to have all those funds throughout the construction schedule and by completion.
Trustee Rogers, if I may.
Go ahead, trustee Rogers.
And I just wanted to just reiterate what, what the update just, just gave the overview on. I did meet with the team who just presented, and we went through, as they say, we looked at the last two or three construction projects to look at all the milestones where we came back to the board to update the board and to get board approval on those items. And so we are moving at according to the same protocol there. And I just want to make sure that that is clearly, clearly stated. And as John mentioned, we're actually ahead of schedule within some of those milestones compared to point in time from when previous approvals were given and then going to the next time when items need to come back to the board for approval. So everything is in line with what has progressed in previous library, new library construction projects. I just wanted to make sure to clearly state that from previous questions that were raised about the process.
Yeah, and just to, just to continue on, just so we all understand, you know, after you, we get your approval to move from design development, we actually go into construction documents, and that's a three or four month process where we're finalizing the construction documents. We're putting out and bidding them publicly. And that could take three to four months as well. That would put us, you know, bringing the board final contract sometime August, September, and then groundbreaking in the early fall. Is that guaranteed? I won't guarantee any, any, any exact timeline. That's the timeline I hope for. There is a lot of obstacles, you know, with this project, just like any other project. We are looking at unpredictable, unpredictable economic conditions. We were looking at unpredictable, you know, chain, chain, supply chain issues. I think they're all overcomeable. This, like any other project, it's about managing a project. We're really receiving good feedback. Core is working very hard with us to identify. I mean, I think this part of the project, when you get in design development, the difference between schematic design is you, is your wish. You put everything that you hope you can do in the project. You know, you, you add landscaping throughout the project. You hope that you can do, you know, expanded technologies in different, you know, different areas. And then you get your first estimate, your second estimate, you decide we can afford this. This needs to be a little smaller. That can't, that can't be included. We can't afford that. So that's where we're at, and that's typically a four or five month process. This is typical. We will meet our budget because we have a lot of different ways to meet the budget. And that's a process that we're in now, and that's the project we bring forward in design development. It's a lot closer. Obviously, at that point, we'll have sixty percent. You know, we'll understand what the interior design is. What floor are we putting in the lobby? What, what real technology are we putting in the creation lab? How much, how much can we afford? How are we gonna build out our recording studio, and how much technology can we afford? You know, we could spend this whole budget probably just in the recording studio, you know, so we have to find the right level of, of design versus detail, and that's, that's, that's really our goal for the next four to five months. And I did put in, in my in, in my report that I really feel that, that we have the right teams in place and the right resources in place, and we're in a better position than we were at East Las Vegas, and that's really really because of the effort, efforts of my old boss, Steve Rice, and Floresto, and Fred James, because, you know, we have the roadmap, right? At that time, when they found out that we didn't have the budget, they had to go and figure out new market tax credits. Where are we gonna get the money to make up that shortfall? We're way past that. We have not only an understanding of the new market tax credits, also with Director Watson and Director Joan Bravetti, we, we are going after our naming rights, which weren't in place, you know, for East Las Vegas. So we have lots of different funding, you know, that is available for this project, which was either unknown or not available for East Las Vegas. And we also have, we very specifically, because we knew we wanted to do pay-as-you-go, we, we designed this project to be over three different fiscal years. So a lot of this stuff, you know, we're paying that we don't need to move forward in our budget every year after year. We, you know, we're working with, with Core, like I mentioned, we do what's called a Miller curve, okay? So that's, we take different budget numbers, and we understand on an eighteen-month project, a construction project isn't linear. It's more like a sine wave. You don't pay the same amount every single month over the cost of the eighteen months. Depending on what construction is going on, it goes up and then it starts coming down. So we know, even in the next fiscal year, what we need if we start, say, our first payment will be due in October. We know roughly what we need to budget to cover construction for those nine months, depending, and then we look, you know, what if it costs us thirty? What does it cost thirty-two, thirty-four, thirty-six? Well, we have to forty million dollars. Not that we're gonna spend that much, but we make sure we can cover that. You know, that's what, that's what's gonna be in next year's budget. So we are well-prepared, depending on where this budget comes out, to have the money available to move forward with this, even into the, through the next two fiscal years. And I wasn't exactly sure, so I, I took a shotgun approach and covered everything. But if there's, you know, any questions, be happy to get into more specifics. I wasn't exactly sure what the board was looking for.
Yes, trustee Ortiz.
Yeah, you guys are doing a great job. Great job. Love it.
Thank you, sir.
However, this is not the procedure. First of all, so we're clear, the trustees vote on whether a library should be built. Just like buying a house, how much are you gonna spend? How much is your budget? This for the first time that I heard that we have, that we're gonna cover this over the three-year fiscal years. That should have been presented to the board so that we can say, okay, let's vote on it. Do we want to do this and how much? The architects know what it costs per square foot. It may not be that, maybe more, maybe less, but at least you have a projection. And then I don't like the way this is brought to us. Last meeting, I did ask for an agenda item. This is not an agenda item. This is a presentation. The purpose of agenda items is so we can have a conversation with each other. Otherwise, we violate the open meeting laws, and so not, this is for, Mr. Vino, thank you. This is for the board here, not, not for you, not any attack on any of this. No, no, no. And so this is important that we have a conversation with each other, that we approve. The board is approving it, not the employees. The employees aren't approving whether or not there's enough money in the next few years. This board is, because at the end of every fiscal year, we sign the budget. Not the employees. Each one of us sign that we've read it and we understand it, and it's fairly gonna be apparently incorporated in this coming next year budget. And so that was my qualm. I know we have money. I'm looking at the numbers. I know where the money's coming from, but we need to allow us to have a discussion, not one trustee, but all of the trustees. If they don't want to say anything about it, that's okay. At least it was an opportunity. But having said my piece, you guys are on track. Now back to Mr. Vino. Fantastic job. The architects are doing great, and yeah.
And this is trustee Rogers. I have a reply to your comments. I would argue that this process is the same as the other processes. The, the information for the budget would be brought to the board to vote, as it has been the same way in the previous construction projects. That's why we went through all the previous all the previous approval process to make sure we were following the same process. And I just want to make sure that we don't misstate that we are doing something different through this process than what has transpired in the past and that the board is not aware, when they need to be aware of what the estimated cost would be to be able to approve what that estimated amount is.
Dr. Rogers, I really appreciate that. And if I could just ask for one thing in your indulgence. Whoever does the agenda, do not bury it on consent agenda. It has to be a public meeting. The public has to have the ability to object or say they agree or disagree. And that's not what has occurred. It's been buried in a consent agenda, not allowing or discussion from the public or the board. So that would be moving forward. You're correct. Everything you said is correct and nothing's mistated, but please put it on a regular agenda item for discussion and possible board action, not just a vote. That would be my, my only request, which Jerry, our legal counsel can agree or disagree if I'm incorrect.
I, I'm going to just agree, trustee Ortiz, you are absolutely blatantly stating a lie. Simple as that. There's no other way to it. It's not intentional, but the fact of the matter is from the minute the consent agenda was put into place two years ago, it's been made crystal clear that this is standard operating rules of order. Go to any city council meeting, go to any government meeting, go to any county meeting, a consent agenda is normal operating procedure. Every trustee is asked before the consent agenda is heard, if they would like to pull any item for discussion. Consent agendas happen after public comment. Anybody can sign up at public comment to comment on any item in the consent agenda. That comment just took place twenty minutes ago, were the consent agenda for tonight, anybody could have commented on. And before we move to the consent agenda, every trustee here but you knows that an item can be pulled from it. And I'm really sick of being accused of violating public meeting law because you won't read Robert Rules of Order. It, it's an embarrassment to yourself and it's an attack on me for how I run the meeting and I am following best practices. And if there's any trustee here that is confused on whether or not we can pull an item from consent and move it to regular discussion, please speak up and tell me if I've somehow been unclear on that policy.
Well, I'm sorry you feel like that. It's not to be argumentative for the public. We're doing a great job. We have a difference of opinion and that's what it is. So, thank you.
And then trustee Rogers may respond. I just want to say, trustee Ortiz, definitely when it's time for the vote on the budget, we'll make sure that it is submitted as an agenda item to be discussed. Every approval along this journey for this project will be, we're requested to be an agenda item for all the board to clearly be aware. And there's a presentation and there's a chance for board to ask whatever questions before calling for the vote.
Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Rogers. Yes, trustee Whitley.
All that I feel very well informed. I very much appreciate the updates that are continually given. I think they're well done. I think they're comprehensive. I don't feel at all concerned about where we're pacing on the budget or timeline. I appreciate the presentation, seeing as this is the first new library I've been able to witness from this side. So it's great to see the timing, but just for the record, I have absolutely no concerns with the way the process is played out by far, so far. And I have all the faith in the world in Mr. Vino and Mr. Cabias that they're going to take us through the appropriate steps when we get there.
I'm trustee Boyd. I totally agree. You've provided us with a continuous flow of information and presentations. I love the video that you showed us at a recent meeting. That was terrific. And I am somewhat taken back that you've had to listen to a tirade. Thank you.
Are there any other comments at this time? Thank you, Mr. Vino. Thank you, Mr. Cabias. Thank you, Dr. Rogers, for the update. It is much appreciated. Would, are any other reports, would any other trustees like to pull forward any other reports for discussion or comment? Seeing none, I will accept the library reports. Item seven, unfinished business. We have none. So will you move on to item eight, new business? The consent agenda. Does anybody want to pull any item for discussion? I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve. Felipe Ortiz moved to approve.
Second.
Motion by trustee Ortiz, second by trustee Whitley. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And we have no items, no item eight D, regular agenda. Onto announcements. First Annual Teen Empowerment Summit on March eleventh at the Whitney Library, fifty-one seventy-five East Tropicana Avenue. For ages twelve to eighteen. Chalk it up at the Summerlin Library, chalk, chalk and art museum. Tongue tied. Summerlin Library Chalk Art and Music Festival on March twenty-fifth, ten AM to two PM at seventeen seventy-one Inner Circle Drive in Las Vegas. The April Board Meeting will be held on Thursday, April twentieth at five PM at the Clark County Library at fourteen oh one East Flamingo. The May Board Meeting will be held on Thursday, May eighteenth at five PM back here at the West Las Vegas Library. The June Board Meeting will be held Thursday, June first at five PM at the Clark County Library on East Flamingo. And do we have anyone signed up for public comment at this time? Ebony?
Yes, I have two to read into the record that was emailed. And then we have six signed up for public comments that are present.
Can we, let's start with reading the ones into the record that came from email.
Okay, the first one is hard no to white supremists. My name is Maya Harvey, who resides at Unfortunately, I am unable to attend tonight's meeting. However, I still want my, my voice to be heard. What we allow is what we will continue. Commitment and communication fail the day we become silent of things that matter. I demand we rescind Kyle Rittenhouse's invitation to speak at an event at East Las Vegas Library. I say no to white supremists. They will not be welcome nor tolerated in the city of Las Vegas. The second is, to whom it may concern, my name is, I'm sorry, the title is Say No To Kyle Rittenhouse. To whom it may concern, my name is Caitlin Provost, and I will not be able to attend tomorrow's meeting. Tomorrow's board meeting, but want my comment submitted. I'm sorry, let me read her address. It's My name is Caitlin Provost, and I will not be able to attend tomorrow's board meeting, but want my comment submitted. I recently, I was recently informed that the East Las Vegas Library intends to host a mass CCW event entitled Guns in the Library and has invited an acquitted murderer, Kyle Rittenhouse, to speak. Though I value our First Amendment rights to free speech, I do not believe that guns belong in our libraries. And I do not believe that this is the message you want to send our community. Kyle Rittenhouse murdered two people, being used as a political pawn to endorse the use of guns at protests to kill people who disagree with you is aborted. I am appalled at the event. I am appalled that the library district had agreed to allow this event. And I am asking that you strongly reconsider. Thank you, Caitlin Provost.
Thank you. That was the two we have written and we have six signed up for public. I would just like to remind the speakers, please limit your comment to three minutes each. Since we only have six speakers, you, everyone will have the full three minutes. If you could, please call forward to the first person.
Shelby Swartz. Please remember to state your full name and your full address.
Thank you, Director Watson, Chair Wilson, and trustees. I am Shelby Swartz. I live here in Las Vegas at Recently, I was disgusted to see an event promoted as Guns in the Library hosted at the East Las Vegas branch. I was even more appalled to see that Kyle Rittenhouse would be a special guest of the instructor. The library is a public space open for all Las Vegans to use. And to allow an event like this featuring a man who took two lives in the name of white supremacy is to tell the people who rely on the library's services daily that you don't value their safety or their lives. Killer vigilantes should not be afforded a platform, least of all in spaces treasured by children and their families. It is your responsibility to ensure that the library remains a safe haven of learning in our city, not a stage for a man who is best known for shooting three people and getting away with it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Laura Martin.
Hello.
Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Laura Martin. I'm the executive director of the Progressive Leadership Alliance of Nevada. We are statewide social justice organization, working to build a more fair and just Nevada that puts people and planet first. Sorry, my address. We like the East Las Vegas Library. We posted bill signings there with the governor, movie screenings for people with DACA. And if you drove past the East Las Vegas Library on Bonanza last summer, you would have seen our public art installation highlighting the faces of the people who work at the library and live in the community on the side of the building. In October twenty twenty-two, we sent in paperwork to the East Las Vegas Community Center requesting use of their parking lot for an early vote celebration for first time voters. This is something we do every election. It has food and it has mariachi. And it's just a nonpartisan celebration of any and everybody who would be a first time voter in that election. The East Las Vegas Library denied our request and said our event was too political. However, they did allow Senator Catherine Cortez Masto to host a political early vote event in that same place to promote her reelection. It's clear that the East Las Vegas Library can pick and choose who uses their facilities, which we were fine with at the time. But to learn that the library district is now saying they cannot deny anyone who fills out appropriate paperwork, including concealed carry instructors who are known to present racist, anti-black slides or armed vigilantes who attend Black Lives Matter rallies armed and eventually killing multiple people. What is next for the library district? Approving a springtime for Hitler celebration? Have some morals and ethics. Guns don't belong in the library. And neither do classes that teach people to conceal them there. The library district must act and show the residents of East Las Vegas, you do care about their safety. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nathaniel Phillips. Please remember to state your full name and a full address on the record.
Good evening, trustees and director. My name is Nathaniel Phillips. My address is I'll try and keep his ass concise and to the point as possible, but I just got off work recently. I'm an elementary school teacher on the east side. I also live within walking distance of the East Las Vegas Library. I'm usually running there because I'm perpetually late to things. But I am delighted that I get to live so close to what is really the flagship library in our, in our community and one that is so important to people who look like me and, and the folks who are sitting behind me. I want to try and say things that other folks are not going to say. But to my knowledge so far, the only response at the library, besides what has been said, the other response from the district to this event happening is that we condone racism. Maybe fifty or sixty years ago, that might have been a meaningful or substantive response. But it's not enough these days because we don't condone racism, but avowed racists are coming to the East Las Vegas Library. They will be there and some of them will, would want to bring their guns. I know that in twenty twenty, in the, when our country was engaged in the most expansive social justice and protest movement in our nation's history after the death of George, murder of George Floyd and Breonna Taylor, this library district, one of the largest and most diverse, signed on to the statement of race and social equity of the Urban Libraries Council or whatever it's called. And one of those pledges that we all pledged to was to eliminate racial and social equity barriers in library programs, services, policies and practices. And one of the ways that we can do that is actually taking a firm stance against fascism coming into our community and providing a platform for people who love a young person who, who thought it would be a fun field trip to go and enact violence in a community that, in a community that he did not belong to. I also want to personally besiege the members of color, the trustees of color on this board to think about what impact this is going to have on other BIPOC people in our community. It has been said that the, the facilitator of the Concealed Weapons Classes, he's an equal opportunity racist, but that's not actually how racism works. Just because you are racist or have racist slides about multiple groups, even if you're a minority, that doesn't take away the fact that it is still racist and that you are engaging in racism. So it makes notice, it, it, I'm sure it violates. Well, let me take that back. The other response from the library district is that you have updated your rental policies to adhere to the recommendations provided by the, what is the committee? The State Equal Right Commission or something like that. Again, that is an impotent, if not incredibly enfeebled response to avowed fascists, people who have killed people, people who have put things on their slides, like make sure you shoot babies when you're around black people because you're sure, you'll be sure to hit a gang member. I don't understand how we can sit up here and debate as if, and debate this. So the library district actually does have the power to prevent hate speech, to prevent racism on its camp, on its, at its properties. And to not do that, I understand it's a public space. Anyone can rent and reserve it. But we actually have tools of preventing hate speech at our libraries, the same way we prevent guns at our libraries. And that's a whole nother issue. It seems that there are pockets of our community who are so ferociously adamant about being able to bring a deadly weapon to our library campus.
You are at three minutes. If I'll ask you to wrap, start wrapping it up, please.
Sure. So again, if you care about not, people not dying, if you care about actually upholding your statement on race and social equity, let's find a way to prevent this, this event from happening, and especially in the heart of Las Vegas, in a black and brown community. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
Chair Wilson, three additional public comments were added. So I just want to say it's a total of nine now, not six.
Thank you.
And the next person is Nefi Kaliki.
Good evening. My name is Nephi Kaliki. I'm a a twenty-nine year resident of Las Vegas. There are many conversations that are difficult to have. An officer notifying a stranger that their son has been killed by a drunk driver. A father telling her son that someone killed their mother for the contents of her purse. As the organizers of the CCW event at East Las Vegas Library, we are self-defense instructors who dedicate our lives to stopping those things I just mentioned from ever happening. The responsibility for addressing the mindset and guiding the actions of gun owners in our community lies with us as instructors. We recognize that Kyle Rittenhouse is a difficult discussion. It is one that needs to be had. We cannot learn from things like this unless we talk about them. We want the district and the public to know that our intention in having this event is to bring about change. As hard as this conversation is, it is our responsibility as instructors to have that conversation. And we would ask people to trust us to do our jobs and to bring about change. Thank you.
Thank you.
Shanze Aslam.
Board of trustees, my name is Shanze Aslam. My address is I am the Economic Justice Program Manager of the Progressive Leadership Alliance of Nevada, a social justice organization committed to uplifting the voices of our most marginalized and directly impacted communities. It is horrifying that this library that serves a community of predominantly people of color will host a concealed carry instructor who has used violent, anti-black racist slides. Slides titled Firearms Safety for Black People that laid out instructions such as always pick, lick the chicken grease off your fingers before shooting. Always make sure there's a white person around so you have someone to blame for everything wrong in your life. And always aim for small children to ensure you actually hit another gang. And always aim for small children to ensure you actually hit another gang member. That's disgusting. And you will host an individual who crossed state lines armed to attend a rally with which his values did not align armed, who ended up murdering two people at a Black Lives Matter rally. Guns do not belong in the library. As a gun owner, I understand gun safety. I understand conversations are important, but guns do not belong in a library. And this type of racism does not belong in institutions our tax money pays for. Libraries should be a place for the community to get resources, learn skills and have cultural celebrations. And we should be able to do that safely. And I urge you to cancel this event immediately. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tamara Favors.
Good afternoon, board members. My name is Tamara Favors and I'm a resident of North Las Vegas. I'm a housing justice organizer with Progressive Leadership Alliance of Nevada. I come to ask you why and how is it possible to give a murderer a platform whose whose sole purpose was to drive across state lines to cause harm and trauma to individuals at a BML protest? However, you didn't you deny my organization to host a GOT event, which was to ensure overlooked communities members have a choice to avoid to vote to make a positive change in Nevada's community. Giving a murderer a platform to potentially inspire another person to cause harm and trauma while denying our community a space to celebrate and uplift our democracy. It's absurd. It makes no sense. It is showing that you're picking and choosing to who has a platform. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michelle May.
Hi, good evening. Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the board. My name is Michelle May. Oh, my address is my name is Michelle May. I'm the president of SEIU Local 1107, largest healthcare and public sector union in Nevada and in the world. We represent about 19,000 members in Clark County. I'm also a Clark County Family Services Supervisor with the Child Fatality and Sex Abuse Unit for Clark County. I'm here today to raise awareness and alarm about the concealed weapons workshop scheduled on May 13th at the East Las Vegas Library. The guest of honor Kyle, as we all know, he's infamous. The workshop will be held by the same gentleman that you just heard from. And then last April, when they held the event in the other library, they were renounced by the library after they left. And many of the other individuals who are at the library also. There's much to unpack about the statements that were said today. But I want you to remember what the last statement said was that he said, aim at a child. So you're always ensuring that you're going to hit another gang member. Working for the child fatality unit, I have been on the other side of what he talked about about telling family members that their children are not coming home anymore. And it is a horrible conversation to have with people. So to have it in a library is not what we need to do. The US had 647 mass shootings last year, according to the Gun Violence Archive. We've had 106 this year. 300 children were killed by gun violence last year and 43 have already died this year. The instructor said, again, a child's death was a joke. I assure you as a mother and as a community member, that is not a joke. That is 100% not a joke. I want to refer you to our Clark County governing principles, accountability, excellence, innovation, integrity, open and inclusive government and respect. Hosting this type of event does nothing to uphold our county values as a community and as a government. If this board doesn't see this as a violation of our county values, then we have a serious problem. We need more gun safety laws, more justice and more understanding across racial lines and not less. If you need proof, look back at our guiding principles like I just read to you. And events like this need to be canceled for being too political. As you just heard, there were a couple of other events that were canceled for being too political. Hosting an event like this will give a platform for hate. That is a difficult conversation to have. As an anti-racist organization, SEIU Local 1107 cannot accept that. Our community, we deserve better. Our children deserve better. You deserve better to put your names on something better. And we will hold this board accountable for the actions or inactions that you take. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jerry Burton.
Thank you. My name is Jerry Burton. I'm the executive director of the Nationalization for Women, the Nevada chapter. My address is I'm a 65 year old, 65 year resident of Nevada. So we were talking about how long we've lived here. So so what happened was I my husband actually must be on some mailing list and received an email about the event. And it had some, you know, what caught our eye were some just horrific pictures of of people sitting at a at a bench saying guns in the library with children with shirts that say guns in the library. So that caught my eye. And then I remembered the event that was held in on the Flamingo Library. We had heard about that before about the racist thing. So I I took it upon myself to write a letter to the trustees. You may have received it. And I said, I was writing to express my concern over the event attached. That they're advertising this as guns in the library and have Kyle Rittenhouse as a speaker. A recent event was canceled by the Venetian last year when they realized who was speaking and the agenda. Having children in guns in the library t-shirts in their ads is bad advertising for the library, I said, and allowing them to hold this event in our community, library is wrong. Please cancel the event as the Venetian did their statement. The Venetian's statement was while the mall does not speak on behalf of tenants, the shopping area wanted to emphasize that the event did not align with our property's core event guidelines. And I can't imagine this aligns with the library district's values. Since then, I've seen an article that talked about how Kyle Rittenhouse was upset that things kept getting canceled. And there was actually a brewery in Texas who canceled an event saying it didn't align with their values. So if it doesn't brewery in Texas. But it it's okay for the library. So I got a nice letter back basically saying, sorry, we don't censor our people. And I said, you know, thank you for responding. I understand you have a policy in place. I rented library rooms for the Nevada Now meetings and had to follow the rules and but you have experience with, I said, you have experience with the same person holding this event at the Flamingo Library. You know who this is this time. You had to apologize last time and other people have talked about the slides. He says, trust him, but he had slides talking about licking grease off your fingers and talking about black people and how you've heard this already. You have evidence of what the last event looked like. Kelvin Watson with the Clark County Library told the Review Journal back then that the district condemned the hate speech in any form and would be reviewing the the room rental policy. So but now he's okay to come to the East Las Vegas Library. And again, you know what the what it looks like this time. He has a radio show, previous program. You're not like going blind this time. You know exactly what it is. So anyway, I hope you'll consider all that we're saying. We're all community activists and and members of your community. And we have I have grandchildren. Is this is just awful and I wouldn't have taken this much time to write these letters if it just wasn't appalling. So thank you. And I hope you'll cancel the event as so many other all around the country have been doing.
Thank you.
Robin Franklin.
Good evening, board. I'm Robin Franklin. I live at and so I thought I was going to prepare something to say to you guys, but I really, I don't have anything that could come off the top of my head knowing that. I just wanted to say that I am, I also just wanted to let you know that I'm a supervisor for Child Protective Services with the Department of Family Services and I'm in the political relations advisor for the National Action Network. When you think of the library and at least when I thought of the library, I always thought that this was this treasure trove of information that I can get, that it was one of the safest places that I could go growing up in basically the ghetto, right? And I always considered it to be that safe place. And that's where children, that's where families go. And you are going to host an event that will put that in jeopardy for kids. This is about guns. This is not about, you know, let's write a short story. This is about people learning how to conceal a weapon that kills. You are going to give a platform to a person who has killed. It is a national, international known thing, a known racist. This is not something, I know everybody has already said it. This is not something that you don't already know. As a taxpayer, as a mother, this is not okay. You know this, you can make the decision to say that this person should not be allowed to come into this community, to come into this black and brown community, to come where children go to be safe and to learn and to escape. You have you have the ability to do that. So I ask you to please reconsider this application. I know that you wouldn't let strippers come and hold a party there. You wouldn't. But you're going to let this person be there with guns. You know, these people are going to bring guns on this 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 premises. And you have children, not just teenagers, you have toddlers, you have mothers, you have children going to be on those premises. It is your duty to protect our public because that's what our taxpayers pay, our tax dollars pay for. Please do your job. Thank you.
Thank you. That is all of the public comment that we have at this time. Thank you, everyone, for sharing your thoughts with the board.
Chair, I would like to speak.
Yes.
Kelly Benavides. As a trustee, I know we're not allowed to go back and forth with public comments, but I do want to make a comment to everyone present. Thank you. Thank you for coming. Thank you for spending your time as a mother as a trustee and as a Latina. I hear you. So I just want to thank everyone that's present that took their time out of their evening to come and put your voice, your thoughts to us. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you trustee Benavides. That wraps up public comment. We do not have an executive session today. Any final comments from the trustees? Seeing none, then this meeting is adjourned.